We will go ahead and call the order the Wednesday, November nineteenth. Twenty twenty-five city soul for the council meeting.
That's starting to work.
I get.
By the grace of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Duncan here, Martin here, Gabriel, Kramer.
Yeah.
Whitehead.
Here.
It goes to our sympathy pledge. We pledge to promote sympathy by listening, being respectful of others and acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. Looking to perfect and improve the agenda and changes for the agenda tonight?
Um, I didn't hear from about all of it, so I've seen him lobby on that.
I'll move to perfect and improving agenda.
Duncan?
Yes.
Arlen?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to citizen speak. This is time for anybody to speak on mountain agenda items. That's anybody signed up for me? Takes us to item seven consent agenda. This is the approval of minute, November fifth, regular uh meeting, approval of the bills, treasuries report and transfers, building permits, which Suzie sent out to us. And then have a board commissioned appointment uh to fulfill the vacancy through the end of the year.
I'm a clue consent agenda.
One second. Duncan?
Yes.
Arlen?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to the public works superintendent report. Chris or Ryan, who wants to go first?
Yeah, uh, building winterization is done down the parks. Uh, everything went well. They're changed, so it's nice. Uh, leaves are going good. Both the new guys are doing great driving, getting the experience there. Matt did get his class B C L. Brady's on his way, so it's going great. Um, working on winterizing equipment. And we got some of the plow equipment ready to go. New liner for the skiing rink is in, so as it gets cold enough, the ground freezes, that's going to go up. Uh, new cat equipment is here, new loader, new skid loader, and we're using them a lot and working really well. Good equipment to have. And we got the patch box loading ready to go. So one of these days when we have a little bit of time, we're going to do some pot hole and pour. It's too cold. And that's kind of what I had to.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Yep.
This is to item nine city engineer.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, first street water main, we've been waiting for the permit on that. I hope for the viewer of UNR. Hopefully either into this week or next week we'll have that and we can get that going. Um, working on the Yarri Acres like Bright Point Water System Study that council offers, so. Collect information and process that. And then uh, V N R did send someone out on the wastewater plant to do a site survey just to check separation distances and so forth. They got a few questions. We've been responding to those. Uh, should have a solid plan approval here shortly.
Alright. Uh, item ten city attorney. Can we have a round up on it all? Alright, that will take us down to new business. So item twelve, bid applications for the E shop.
Um, so thank you. In the packet, you'll see the application that um that I received from Cheryl Maloney who's here. She's the owner of the E shop and uh the finance committee Cole and John, who um Cole's been, I mean, John's been kind of filling in for Steve on some of those meetings. And um, as a previous finance committee uh person, so it's been a good transition and appreciated that very much. Uh, so uh, the the request uh is in your packet. Um, Cheryl's here. Uh, the committee has recommended um a TIF forgivable loan in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to help offset some of the remodel costs that um um uh, the business incurred uh recently when they expanded into part of the bike shop area and just to offset some just general costs. Um, uh, operating costs uh in your packet is that application and then of course Cole and John are welcome to chime in.
They can agree uh downtown downtown business. Um, what we're looking to do is just kind of help them get over the hump since that half of Main Street has had some struggle as of late. So what we're looking to do is um provide some general assistance while the larger plan to expand Main Street and maybe pull some additional foot traffic in that area comes to fruition. And just keep a local solar business fair.
Exactly. Yep. Any questions, your comments from this? Obviously love having you out in town.
Thanks.
And your product.
We're glad to have your flagship store here in town and it's good to see you guys keep expanding and and be a town that gets a call so on and on.
Yeah, thank you. Don't forget to order your Thanksgiving.
With that, do we have a motion or action on the tip application?
I'm moving to approve the tip application for Dean shot.
I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Arlen?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I explained to Cheryl already that with council's approval, then then uh I'll engage with our bonding council and we'll get the paperwork started. There's a lot of formalities. It takes about two months to go through that form, that formal process. And then that'll come back in the form of a formal agreement for the council to uh to approve. Thank you.
Takes us to item thirteen tip application for uh RJ's Express.
And also tip application received uh from Randy Walter, who's um owner of RJ's Express. They are faced with um a mandate on fuel where they are um required to up upgrade their pumps and um and their lines to the pumps um due to the E fifteen mandate. Uh, it's pretty expensive undertaking that work's going to actually be done here next month. It actually has to close down and not be able to sell gas for a few weeks while that's happening. Um, so that request um also was reviewed by John and Cole and they are recommending a thirty thousand dollar uh forgivable loan to help offset that um that project.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of the same. You've got uh another another business that's in town that's um uh had had to endure hardship based on regulations that they they really couldn't avoid. And and we thought that this was a a good use of TIF funds to to be able to use in the capacity of helping them to to make sure that they can maintain maintain a spot here in town. They've been doing their due diligence. They're working with uh represent grants with the state and uh with the federal government to offset some of those costs. We were their last stop, so they've been working. Working diligently to cover as many of the costs outside of this as possible.
Any other questions or comments from this?
I just want to mention that Randy will be here, but he had another engagement, so he apologizes for that. I'll move to approve the tip application for RJ's Express.
I'll second. Duncan?
Yes.
Arlen?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item fourteen, this is resolution twenty-five forty-one, the street finance report.
Yeah, the street finance report is a required annual report um due December first. This report is um done through the D O T. They like an accounting of all street related expenditures. Um, that helps the state of Iowa then get federal funding for state projects. They specifically want to know how we spend our street dollars in both general fund and the street. Uh, uh, the road use fund, which is the one-ten fund. Most uh communities cannot fund their entire street department with just the road use dollars that come in. Um, last fiscal year as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, we received uh four hundred and twenty-eight uh thousand dollars in road use tax funds. The street department combined general fund and uh road use um was uh 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 um over a million dollars to fund the the street departments um within the city of Solon. About six hundred and fifty of that is done in general fund. And uh three hundred and ninety thousand of that was spent out of road use itself. So just to give you an idea of, you know, what it takes to operate a street department um in a in our community. We also have to report any bonds that are related to um streets. And we have one bond, which is the East Fifth Street Bond um that we reported this year. And uh that payment was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars that was made in local option sales tax funds. We're used to make that payment last year. They also want to know an accounting of our equipment. And so um in that report, you'll see any equipment that is considered an expense over five thousand dollars and has a motor. So they don't actually, they don't want trailers and things like that. Um, so we had, we sold two of the older trucks and then we added the um we added a, last year we had, we added a Ford one fifty um and we added the uh the super duty. What else did we get? They're they're not, they're not listed here in the right order, so. What was that?
The F two fifty.
Yeah, the F two fifty. Um, so we updated that. And so this report just needs to be approved by resolution. And then I can be submitted to the D O T.
I live to approve resolution twenty-five forty-one.
And a thank you to Dave and Public Works for all of the, I mean, more than two lots streets.
I'll second. Duncan?
Yes.
Or yes. Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item fifteen, resolution twenty-five and forty-two, the annual finance report.
Um, this is also an annual report due on December first. We we call it the A F R for short. And this is a actual accounting of the entire city's financial expenditures and revenues for the fiscal year that ended June uh thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Uh, this report is uh similar to the budget form, so it's if it looks familiar, that's why, because they they kind of, the columns run in that same pattern as the budget forms. Uh, the city of Solon uh received uh nine point seven million dollars in revenue and spent nine point five million dollars uh last year. We have a reserve as of six thirty twenty twenty-five of nine nine point eight million dollars. That uh reserve is uh all the entire, we we typically operate in funds, general fund, TIF, loss, water sewer. That's a, that's a uh consolidated nine point eight, as we all know. We are trying to build capital and reserves towards the wastewater treatment plant project. And so um a lot of money is sitting in CDs trying to earn interest because we know the more cash we have for that project, the less we have to borrow for that project. Um, the other thing that's notable on this is that it shows our debt capacity, so we are able to borrow general fund money, um, general fund, general obligation bonds up to five percent of our um valuation, which is twenty million dollars. So we have twenty million dollars that the city can buy. That's our capa, that's our borrowing capacity. Um, and so we have to manage that obviously with the upcoming wastewater treatment plant project, but also any other projects that we have in addition to any debt we we currently have, which is about six million dollars. Um, there's something, we have a new page on this report where um they needed us to um they just wanted a lot more detail on our current debt. Um, so that took some extra work this year to go back through those those uh those transcripts and update that page. Um, but all in all, that is, that report is ready to go. Um, it does require publication, so we have to give notice in the newspaper, which will go into the newspaper and be published next week and then be ready for submission on December first. And I need you to sign that, Mary, before you leave. And then that also needs to be approved.
We have a motion for resolution twenty-five forty-two, that annual finance report. I'll move to bring those what I can play back working to.
I'll say it.
Duncan?
Yes.
Arlen?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item sixteen, resolution twenty-five forty-three, the urban renewal report.
Uh, the urban renewal report is an accounting of what the city spent on TIF. This is just TIF related um in uh the last fiscal year, F Y twenty-five. Uh, the city collected six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from TIF and um spent six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. That included uh a rebate to the Solon Care Center. Um, a TIF agreement for the Lindeman Project across the street, also the ground storage reservoir bond, fifty-six percent of the North Trump sewer bond because forty-four percent of that project lies outside of the city limits, so we can't TIF for the part that lies outside of the city limits. And then the North Street Project, three hundred and ten thousand. So that's how that six hundred and forty-four, six hundred and sixty-four thousand comes to be. Um, there are some monies that have been collected from previous years. We also um had um one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in curb and gutter work that we collected for um uh last fiscal year. So curb and gutter works a little different because you have to do the work. And then you have to report, report the, report it, and then you receive it. So it's really like a three-year process. So it gets a little, it gets a little confusing on that. Um, and then uh I think that's all the notes that I had on that, so um and this report uh does not require to be published. It just needs required approval by the city council.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty-five forty-three.
Right. Duncan?
Yes.
Arlen?
Yes.
Gabriel? Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
It goes to item seventeen, resolution twenty-five forty-four, the annual appropriations.
Thank you. The annual appropriations, as I talked about the um, the curb and gutter, how it covers a span of three years, uh, we have to certify it as debt so that we can claim it as TIF. So this resolution certifies that curb and gutter for what we did this year, which was uh this Iowa street section, which was fifty-seven thousand dollars. So we're certifying that as debt and now that debt is eligible to be um recouped via TIF. Um, and so that's what that resolution does is allow us to claim TIF, TIF funds for the. I'll move to approve resolution twenty-five forty-four, annual appropriations.
Second. Duncan?
Yes.
Arlen?
Yes.
Gabriel? Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item eighteen, which is for twenty-seven, it's uh certification.
And this last financial report is the TIF certification. Now we're shifting gears instead of, we've been talking about the past, now we're talking about what we're going to be receiving TIF for in F Y twenty-seven. F, so we certify a TIF certification on December first of this year to receive it in F Y twenty-seven. It 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 runs with property taxes, so obviously property taxes are uh run a year behind, so so does the TIF certification. So um as we look at this TIF certification, it is required to be filed with the um auditor's office by December first. And then we will begin to receive that money um in neck, in July of uh this next year, but the fiscal year ends in the following year, so twenty twenty-seven. So it sounds really longer than it is. Um, so what we um have done here in the finance committee um has um met with uh Heidi Cool. And we kind of talked through some strategy, strategies on um on how we're going to approach our TIF requests, knowing that we have to continue to build some cash for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, what we're doing here in this TIF uh to certification is we are certifying new debt of the curb and gutter project, which was the fifty-seven thousand and the North Street Project. And that is the one hundred and twenty-six, but basically about one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That's the last request we're going to have for the property over here. Um, we did an urban renewal amendment of up to six hundred and fifty thousand. So we can request TIF up to six hundred and fifty thousand and this la, this last hundred and twenty-six gets us to that six fifty cap. So that's new debt we're certifying. And then we are going to also be requesting TIF to help they pay um some bond payments, including the ground storage tank. Um, bond payment of uh around ninety-eight thousand. The North Trump Sewer, which is a hundred and nine, and that's just that fifty-six percent that's in the city limits. And then the the um, the East Fifth Street Bond Payment, which is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Now, this is what the um finance committee talked about with Heidi is that um that we're using TIF for that instead of loss because we're able to allocate that money towards the new sewer plant if we shift. And we also have a, how TIF works is there's a we have, every time we collect uh TIF money, our general fund goes down. It it's like this. This is how it works. So we have to be careful. We're not asking for too much TIF that we go down too far. Because if we go down too far, we still have the majority of our city departments run out of general fund. We we short ourselves. So we found that balance is around seven hundred, eight hundred thousand. So in keeping with that balance to make sure we're not dipping our general fund down too far, um Heidi recommended we shift that east str, east fifth bond payment to TIF, which is reflected on here. And also um uh make an additional payment of a hundred and thirty thousand on that. Um, and that does two things. It uh lowers our interest for the for the coming years now because we're making an additional payment. It's not a full payment, it's a partial payment. Um, but it also the council's been, had a lot of discussions about a new community center, recreation center. And so trying to get us to a place that we can um uh bond, you know, get, keep our bonding capacity where we could start actually getting a plan on paper for that. So that's the reason behind that. And then um this, we also have to report on our TIF certification. Um, any debt we have that we're not using TIF. So we are not using TIF for the fire department bond, which is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That's paid uh both by the city lost funds and by the agency. And then we're also not asking for TIF for that forty-four percent of the North Trump Sewer that's outside of the city limits. And so again, that is uh for TIF that's going to come in in fiscal year twenty-seven. And so this just requires approval from the city council and then it'll be submitted to this county auditor's office by December first.
Alright, any questions or comments on any of that? There it sounds, that's good. Okay, do we have a motion for the fiscal twenty-seven tip certification? I will live to approve the F Y twenty-seven tip certificate.
Second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Arlen?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item nineteen, that's our N A electric meter update.
Thank you. You may remember that we talked about this electric meter a few months ago. Um, the plan was um E and J had um offered two options. One was to um add a new, add a new meter, a Lyant meter, and then there'd be two separate meters, one for the city, one for the school. It was going to cost about sixty-five hundred dollars. The city council and the school board agreed to share that cost. Uh, however, after um uh the Aliant Meter Shop took a look at it, they weren't really comfortable with that approach. And um so I talked with John Schmidt and he said that um the the the, he's, the equipment's all in good shape. He recommends that we just do the option one, which was just to get everything identified. And then there is an auxiliary meter down there that Aliant doesn't read, that he could show us how we could, you know, once everything's identified, better be able to figure out what school, what city, and then bill accordingly. But build the school accordingly on an annual basis. We were trying to get away from that because it was set up to do that originally and that just never happened. Because as things have gotten added over the years, it's just more confusing as to what's on these meters. Um, so just getting them identified is really our goal right now. And um the school board uh approved that option last night at their school board. So we're just asking for council to, since this is different than what you had originally approved, just uh one, kind of let you know the change and just to prove that second, that it's option one on that, on that quote.
This point, just to keep it moving forward, so we're not holding up other things with the school or twenty-eight year frame that I become prepared with that. I'm I'm good with the two thousand. Wow, I'll move to approve the S R N A electric meter. Uh, it's option one, sorry?
I'll say it. Duncan?
Yes.
Arlen?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item twenty, the construction contract uh for the new city hall, the model.
Thank you. Uh, the contract Kevin has put together. Uh, we had put out a request for quotes um for the remodel of the pro, of the new city hall and um put together kind of a scope of work and we received one quote back from Seabrook Construction. We reached out to several companies who just, it's just a busy time of year and um so, but we were glad to get one quote and the uh, the quotes uh reflects the scope of work that we that we put in the request for proposals. Um, Kevin has put together the contract. Um, that'll need to be signed. Josh has put together, Josh Bay has put together an inspection schedule that will be required of the project. Then um uh according to uh John Seabrook, they would get in there uh the week right after Thanksgiving and tentative completion date uh end of January. This is all also depends on those doors and windows which have already been ordered because some of that finished work can't be done until those doors are in. Um, this quote is a little bit different than some of our original conversations because um they're moving some doors or saving some money by moving some of the uh doors um uh around the building rather than buying new doors, but there is an expense to have them do that work, so. Um, I recommend approval of the contract so they can get get started on this. And then I also included, um, and I don't know why it printed funny, um, but I, it just kind of a phase one and a phase two of where we out, where we're at with uh with estimates um on the project. So the remodels of the hundred ninety-three, two hundred light windows is around fifty thousand. Now that's doors and windows. Um, phones is about seventeen hundred. Um, we just got the security quote um for the doors is uh seventy-seven hundred and the cameras are fifteen thousand. Uh, we don't have audio visual quote yet and that's for the council chambers to have microphones and and, you know, things that will make that suitable for meetings. So our first phase currently is at two hundred and eighty-two thousand. For our second phase, we know we're going to have geothermal. We've already talked about um the quote from E and J. And then we know that there's going to be some outdoor site work and Dave's uh Dave's team is uh working on some plans and the council can review those. And then we can start getting that part out for some estimates. We're considering that a phase two because that work isn't going to be done during the winter anyway. So we'll get, we'll just get in and then we'll focus on phase two. Anything on the contract?
No, the contract's pretty, pretty standard uh, pretty standard contract. It can get started once they sign it and get the insurance certificate to us. It should be able to get going then.
They should be able to get going then. Any questions or comments from the council?
After the walk-through, I think it'll be a great place to completely follow it or serve not only our current needs, but future needs for decades from the council. Um, and I want to thank everyone for being budget conscious as they kind of went through this little savings where we can, just to make sure that we're keeping costs reasonable and we're on projection as far as I can help. So thank you to Kami and the team for working on that. Thanks to Cole and Mark for going through and off through with.
Yeah, there's, there's fun as well.
We have, I just want to say, I just want to piggyback from what Cole said is, you know, keeping it responsible, but also keeping, keeping the uh, the business local as well. So um, the fact that we can have local contractors that can be jumping on this in uh a timely manner is, is, is pretty, pretty awesome as well. Uh, that, do we have a motion for the construction contract?
I move to approve the construction contract for the new city hall remodel.
I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Takes us to item twenty-one, trailer states, arc uh three, escrow, escrow release. Do you have Kami or Dave?
Yeah, at least the requesting is for the part you put in the building installed. Uh, in that area, there was a ball court, uh, playground equipment. The ball court also has a basketball hoop on it. They've installed a fence around there, put down the Ford servicing and they have put up a net fencing around so everything looks as intended on the ball court. Playground equipment, um, they have a uh rail around the outside of it, some of the wood chips that are uh eco-friendly that are supposed to be used for playground purposes, so it falls. Um, there's some question where that has been installed and uh the playground equipment is in place. Uh, it appears to have been completely only remaining item out there. And I looked at it, was trying to get some seating around that and they're working on some repairs from one of the people that you've gone through and installed, and that's the reason. So uh their part is done. There'll be some touch-up seating required later, but uh box inspection, I think, and we go ahead and see how it's going.
Solid done now.
Solid done. Okay, they just got that done. Yep, okay. So, should we go?
All right.
So we've made the addition of another pickable part.
Any questions or?
I move to agree for your way, just like to look for Ecosgrom.
I'll say it. Duncan?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Takes us down to other business. So uh council committees, there will be a streets committee following the meeting tonight. And for the building needs and growth, looks like the R P review will be scheduled coming up.
Still working on that. And so I'll get that out to the miniature view and probably go wide with that.
It's uh city and school committee, uh, we'll be on the school comments. I had sent some response back from twenty-eight. The agreement, anything to add to that?
Think so.
Uh, fringe area agreement. Yeah, just working with the attorney and that. Get through, we get by the attorneys, which is always the problem. And then you, then you can get to the supervisor and the council level and make it easier. Uh, takes to item twenty-three, city clerk, Suzie. Twenty-four, um, city administrative hours, Kami.
Wanted to let the council know that planning and zoning is going to be meeting on December second rather than our usual date, just because of the Thanksgiving holiday. It shouldn't impact any, anything, it shouldn't cause any delays. It'll just be a quick turnaround because the council will meet the very next night. So you'll see that business on the city council agenda. And then also um staff appreciation uh is gonna be this Friday and um we're all gonna have a fun afternoon at North Liberty Pizza Ranch.
Have fun. Don't overdo the thing. Takes a chicken and pizza. Takes to item five, council comments.
That's nice.
Five, uh-huh, same here for mayor comments, uh, which moves us to item twenty-seven. Uh, we have a motion for adjournment.
Move.
Second.
We'll finish that.
Hi.
In the post.